Yes, it's in experience.
Okay, all right. Call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is any items from the public? Nobody from the public? All righty. Can I motion to approve the agenda? There's, I think we do have a modification at the 1055 is stricken from the first, yeah, yeah, remove the 1055, which is the first energy presentation.
I move that we accept the, approve the agenda for June 27, 2024 with the change involving the elimination of 1055.
Thank you. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, we have 28 internal budget revisions. Mr. Administrator.
It's all you. It is, and most of them are from me. As you well know, it's end of the fiscal year and just, just moving some money around internally to ensure we don't have any deficits in particular line items. The first one came from Clerk Petrusi asking for permission to move $1,000 from his training line item to his contractual services. The second one and the rest from me. Account 401 moved $3,800 from training, or excuse me, from audit costs to training. The next one would, in account 401, would to be moved $130 from audit costs to contractual services. Account 412 to move 100, or excuse me, $31 from insurance to salary. Again, account 412 move a whopping $3 from account 105, which is insurance, to account 104, which is FICA. Account 416 move $3,000 from insurance to retirement. 416 again move $14,800 from insurance to overtime. 416 again to move $800 from insurance to account 113, which is holiday pay. Account 424 to move $13,100 from account 239, which is insurance premiums, to materials and supplies. Department 425 move $4,502 from account 224, which is audit costs, to 219, which is rents. Department 425, other buildings, move $460 from audit cost, which is 224, to account 223, which is professional services. Count for, Department 428 move $2,800 from account 105, which is insurance, to holiday pay, which is 113. Department 428 again move $1,200 from 221 training to 216 maintenance repair to equipment. 428 move $1,700 from 211 to 223, which is professional services. 438 building inspections move $5,500 from 103, which is salaries, to 105, which is insurance. Department 711 to correct account 103, you'll remove $23,446.75 from 105. $4,651.41 from 113 and put both of those in account 103, which is salaries totaling 711 again move $2,715.53 from 113 to 106, which is retirement. 711 move $1,963.21 from overtime into 104, which is FICA. Department 717 move $2,549 from 105, which is insurance, to 103, which is FICA. 717 move $147 from 105, which is insurance, to 147, which is FICA. 731, which is the DRC Center, move $30,800 from insurance 105 to 103, which is salaries. 731 again move $895 from 105 to 104, so insurance to FICA. 731 move $2,543 from insurance to 106 over, uh, it's 106, sorry, I don't remember. Had it documented. And in mental health, 801, $327 from insurance to 104. 801 to move $1,200 from insurance to 108, which is overtime, I apologize. And from, also in 801, in 113 to move $435 from insurance to holiday pay. In 802, recovery services, in account 103, asking to move $4,800 from 105 to 103. 802 asking to move $30 from account 105 to 106, which is retirement, and that's all of them. All of those are just internally ensure we don't have any negative numbers in your individual line items. So the money's there, it's moving around, so everything has a positive number.
How to balance that budget, don't you?
It's all balanced, this is just keeping no negative dashes in front of any numbers.
All righty, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have change in status, new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Shelley Shopper, Circuit Clerk for Brianna Kiesacker as a deputy clerk with the annual salary of $38,500. That's effective July the 8th, 2024. Change in status received from Randy Lilly, Emergency Management Director for the following effective July 1. John Graham is going from firefighter 2 to firefighter 3 with a salary increase of $56,005 to $58,0514. Zachary Markley is going from firefighter 2 to firefighter 3 with a salary increase from 61,00525 to 64,282. Change in status received from Jennifer Swisher, 911 Director for the following effective July 1, 2024. Samantha Deals is going from a call taker to telecommunicator 1 with a salary increase from $46,357 to $50,341. Danielle Ray is going from telecommunicator 1 to telecommunicator 2 with a salary increase from $50,341 to $52,858. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Rob Blair for Dave Ritchie. He is going from corporal to sergeant with a salary increase of $69,045 to $74,719. That's affected, that was effective March 13, 2024. And we have a letter of resignation received from the Day Report Center for Terry Wilson Kramer, and that was effective June 28, or is effective June 28. And per, per the assessor, removed Kaylee Bryant, Monica Snyder, and Kaylee Gamonte from payroll effective June 24, 2024. And we have the approval of the minutes, need to pull those out, that myself and Eddie were not here on June 13.
Mr. President, move we accept the June 13, 2024 minutes as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, and we have two abstentions for due to absence. Stop payment check request from the County Clerk's Finance Office, and that's moving on through. And a bond release, Mid-Atlantic I-81 Logistics Park, Brooklyn County, BCP file 2303-118 tied to 22106-0245, that's a grading bond. And the, let's see, I guess the grading bond number is K40302165, and the engineering has recommended that recommendation. We have a bond reduction for Cardinal Point, Phase 3, I'm sorry, Section 3, Phase 1, final plat, file number 2101-008 tied to 2101-007, number 2108-319, and 2111-336, and that's tied to bond number 100633635, and engineering has made that recommendation. Have a bond reduction for Cardinal Point, Section 3, grading, file number 2101-009 tied to number 2101-007, 2108-319, and number 2111-336, and 2110-0239, and the bond number on that one is 100618216, and also engineering has made that recommendation. Have a bond reduction, Brookfield Subdivision, Phase 2, grading permit, number, BCP file 2401-013 tied to 2401-010, 2312-399, and 101-06, and bond number for that is 115438, engineering department has made that recommendation. Have a bond reduction, Brookfield, Phase 2, Section 10, final plat, BCP file 2401-011 tied to 2401-010, file number 2312-399, and 101-06, bond number is 1001046870, engineering has made that recommendation. Have a bond reduction, Brookfield, Phase 2, Section 2, final plat, BCP file 2401-012 tied to 2401-010, also 2312-399, and 101-06, and the bond, bond number for that is 100435020, and engineering has made that recommendation. We have a bond release, Mid-Atlantic I-81 Logistics Park, Lot 2, BCP file number 2303-111 three oh three dash one one eight tied to twenty one oh five dash zero three one one, and that's a grading bond. A number, or bond number, K four oh three oh two two four four, engineering has made that recommendation. Then we have a bond release for Spring Mills Apartment Phase, Apartments Phase Three, BCP file twenty three oh six dash two two three tied to twenty three oh six dash two one one, twenty one oh two dash oh forty-three, and twenty one ten dash oh two one two. That's a grading bond number on that one is one zero zero six one eight five two eight, and the engineering has made that recommendation. And I think that's it, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
The move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries, and we have nothing from the assessor for the correction of the logs. Board of Meeting reports, Mr. Boyd.
Well, I had a partial CBB meeting yesterday before I had to leave to go to the ribbon cutting, but there are a few things going on there. There was a presentation given by John Tobin about American Legion Post Fourteen Baseball State Tournament to be hopefully held here in Martinsburg. You know, been a collaborative effort to do a lot of work to the fields and the parking lots and things over there, and once every five years, there's an opportunity in each region to host the state tournament, which brings in around three hundred and fifty hotel rooms and different things. So they went to the CBB Board and proposed for the seed grant, and they were awarded the grant yesterday of twenty thousand dollars, so the tournament should be here. The overall cost on the tournament is about fifty-two thousand, they're still looking for some more private sponsors for some other things, but they have a bulk of the money put together already, and so it looks like the tournament will be held here, that's on July. It's a whole week long. I might have to get back to you on the date of that. But it's in July, mid-July, and it's a week-long tournament. So they did award that grant, and then there was a talk after that about the new hospitality and tourism program going into the high schools starting next year. Very interesting, it's a new curriculum that the students can sign up for, it's a four-year program. It gives them one of their two, if they complete the whole four-year program during high school, it's basically like one of their elective classes, they still have to take their core classes, but they could take this as an elective for four years, and it would allow them to, if they so choose to move on to college, it already completes one of their two years of associate's degree to move into that field of tourism or hospitality. And if they don't so choose, they do get a certificate straight out of high school that they can use to apply at different hotels or resorts or things like that. It's something that the Governor and the Department of Tourism put together, and now it's going in place in all the high schools. There'll be different internships in the summers and things for docent programs and different things of that nature.
Anything else?
That's about all I got out of that meeting yesterday. Well, actually, they did approve one other grant, I got that in a text afterwards. They had one more grant that was awarded to, the Berkeley two fifty Hack Wilson Historical Marker Grant Request for three thousand ninety-four dollars was approved.
Very good. Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a Board of Health meeting last week. It was pretty much departmental reports, Bill reported on the, of course, the upcoming budget, which is kind of in the hole at this present time, but that'll, I'm sure, get worked out as the year progresses. They approved the Berkeley Morton County Board of Health Department Chain of Command. As you may know, there's going to be one vacancy due to retirement, and they employed the district sanitarian to come back as the head of the environmental section, his name's Marty Snyder. Doesn't have much practical experience, but he, again, he's a warm body. So the only one with real practical experience is Glenn Ondok. So, God bless you, if you're running up against that. And of course, Kara Harding is the administrator along with Bill Kearns, and that's pretty much the Board of Health. Public Service Water District, Monday, approved alternate mainline extension agreement for Water Garden Farms, which is a warehouse, but I didn't connect on where it was, and then two hundred and forty-six single-family houses on Liberty Run, which is off Baker Road. They approved pay resolution for the construction with Pike Side Water Main Project for half a million dollars, I went to Snyder Environmental. And, let me see, I think that was pretty much it. Give me a second here while I review the papers, because this is Monday, that was a long time ago. Not really. That's pretty much my meetings. Then they went to executive session, Lord knows what they talked about there. And that was it.
That was it, very good. Nothing else?
Nope.
Mr. Catley.
Yes, sir. Last week, obviously, we didn't meet on Thursday, so I met last Tuesday with the sewer board, and most of the meeting at the sewer board's upgrade, updates on the different projects, and one of the big projects has been for the past year now, has been all the new pumping stations, six of which are out in the Hedgesville area. They're all completed now, and they're all working really well, and so really pleased with that. And then also, the big project is a nine-million-dollar project at the Woods Resort on the treatment plant there, and things are moving rapidly there and ahead of schedule at this point, too, so.
Just took care of all the problems with the Hedgesville list stations, overrunning and all that, so pooling and all that sort of stuff.
It's going to help tremendously, okay, and it has, and there was a study done, but also with the sewer, the big issue is there's places where we get a lot of stormwater into our sewerage system, and trying now to identify all those locations is a really difficult thing, and so they're working very hard to recognize as many of those places as possible to prevent that, and a lot of times, it's done by private residents, and it's hard to regulate, obviously, but the new pump stations has helped dramatically in terms of the flow, flow rate and all for that area. Also, following that, each, we meet twice a month, is a stormwater board meeting, and of course, the big news there is the, is the state permit, which they put out publicly for comments, and I sent each of you a copy of the letter from Richard Lewis that he submitted to the West Virginia DEP in regards to this new MS four statewide permit. Of course, the next day, they extended it for thirty more days, the comment period through July twenty-second now, but from the word we're hearing, they still plan to get this new permit in place before the end of this calendar year. The impact it's going to have is, it's going to be very interesting to see how it's going to involve future development here in the county, and the requirements are going to get, are going to get stiffer and tougher in terms of regulating stormwater, and also the big news is trying to develop a five-year plan on how we're going to reduce the nutrients going into the bay, and not just able at where it is, but actually reduce the nutrient levels. So it's going to be a challenge, and more to come, I guess, as time prevails, so. Of course, yesterday, I was at the groundbreaking ceremony, and I want to extend my appreciation and congratulations to Elaine Bartleson, Executive Director for the Transit Authority. This is going to be a tremendous thing for the community, particularly in Martinsburg, but for our whole county, I think, and her board, her staff deserves congratulations. And also want to extend my appreciation for Matt Mullenex, Jim Barnhart and I serve on the MPO, and Matt's our executive director, and he was very involved in participating to try and, you know, twenty million dollars worth of federal grants is a, is a big deal for this county, and it's going to be a wonderful thing when it's finished, and they're very excited, and they deserve a lot of credit for the pursuit of this, so. Because I was there, I missed my senior service meeting, services meeting yesterday, but I did talk to several board members after the meeting, and it was pretty much business as usual. Amy was on vacation, but she phoned in, and other than some personnel issues, everything's going well there. And then this evening, I have our ambulance authority meeting here at five o'clock this evening, so, thank you, sir.
Eddie, what do you have?
Yes, and your pump stations at the sewer district is helping them get in compliance with the consent decree from previous orders, that's where a lot of that work comes from. I met with Landmarks Tuesday, I believe it was, and of course, Dollar General's still on the, on the agenda there, it's my understanding, they're coming back before the planning commission, perhaps at their next meeting. They still have the support and the letter from SHIPO, and I'm sure that Landmarks President will be there as well, dealing with, trying to protect that historic district. An issue that we are having is the maintenance of Camp Hopkins, which is out off of Allensville Road. There's about a two-acre Civil War site there that really, they don't have the funds to maintain it, so we have to be able to work on something there.
I know the people that could help with that.
Well, I was, actually, you're on my notes, contact you about that. And then yesterday, I met with the Water District in trying to locate and secure water for the new plant in Bunker Hill, and also attending the Eastern Panel Transit Authority groundbreaking yesterday, which is very exciting, you know, right here in the heart of the city, a totally new facility that will serve not only the residents of the city, but Berkeley County very well, so congratulations to them as well.
Anything else?
No, sir, no. Hey, Jim, on that Civil War thing, and I wonder, I don't have information, I couldn't get through to Kevin today, but there's a possibility we will have a press release next week on, hopefully on Tuesday, July second, which will be the anniversary date of the Battle of Oaks Run about this, and I'm waiting on information from Kevin, so if I don't get it to you before you leave today, I'll certainly email to everybody over the weekend, and hopefully, there's going to be a press release on Tuesday, we're hoping about this potential site for our first ever recognized battlefield here in the county, so.
Great news.
I found the dates of the baseball tournament, if anybody wants to know. It's July twenty-fourth to July thirtieth.
Okay. Alrighty, during my time of being away and back here again, I tell you, Eddie and I, we attended, I'll have to tell about this a little bit if you don't mind, we attended, what was it, U? Upan, or Epan here from Berkeley County was our, our granddaughters were playing in this tournament, it took place at the Orange County Convention Center in Orlando. I got to tell you, I don't know if you've ever been to one, or ever been to the Orange County Convention Center, but there was over two hundred and fifty volleyball games going on at one time in this facility. Eddie and I both talked about it and thought that, well, if we ever had a warehouse that ever had that ability to have something in, we better look at it, but again, with everyone that was there, how many people, you think? Forty thousand participants? Easy.
Yeah, across the board.
Across the board.
Parents, everybody.
And then finding hotel rooms to have, to house anything like that would be just unheard of, but anyway, it was well worth the attendance just to watch the grandkids play and how exciting it was to see all that happen. That was one thing that I was at, and then I was, actually, another one that I was able to attend was in Nashville, had nothing to do with the county, but I got to see Laney Wilson inducted into the Grand Ole Opry. That was pretty impressive, I had a great time doing that. But getting back to the county, I was able, between those two events, I was able to attend a planning commission meeting, I think we had, was it three or four public hearings that month? Probably four. I think there was four, it was kind of uneventful, there was a couple of comments that were made about, you know, our growth in the county, but I think probably the one to attend will be on Monday, the first, and I'll be there, so that's what I have coming up. And I did attend the West Virginia Court Board meeting down in Roanoke, the pool was in very good standing, it's a very strong pool, and we will continue to grow.
Have a new customer.
And we may, I'm not going to announce that yet, I'll leave that to the city, but I do have to give Chris Carey a call and let him know that, what the possibility with a new customer for them are. And that's about all I had, and what else? And also attended the groundbreaking ceremony, a little bit warm, but well worth the attendance to watch.
The adorns were excellent.
Yeah, so it was.
Prepared by.
Blue Ridge.
Blue Ridge College.
Yeah, they did a great job, and in partnership. I know it's an exciting time for Elaine, and it was an emotional time, so it was good to have, and I'm looking forward to the ribbon cutting date for its grand opening, and I think it's twenty twenty-five, some latter part of twenty twenty-five.
Don't forget today's ribbon cutting.
And today's ribbon cutting for the murals at one o'clock.
On Hollow Trail.
On Hollow, yeah, we'll be there. That's all that I have, so, next up, board and commission vacancies.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to appoint, reappoint Michelle Hathitt to the Solid Waste Board for a new term, her term expires six thirty twenty-four, and I think it's a four-year term.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President, with Helen Harris and Monty Hicks terming out on the Development Authority, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Patrick Winkelman and Donna Van Meter to those two positions, and also reappoint Abe Ashton, Doug Long, and Brandon Smith to the Berkeley County Development Board.
Yeah, you've heard the request and the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Anything else, reappointments?
We're good?
Alrighty. Let's see, ten o'clock, we're right on time, public hearing to adopt in the amended subdivision land development ordinance. Motion to.
Mr. President, I move to open up a public hearing for the Berkeley County Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance.
Alrighty, the public hearing is now open, and anybody from the public can come and speak on their behalf. I believe this is going to be a short public hearing.
Brian?
Brian, you have anything you'd like to comment on? Been a, been a process to get this going through.
Yes, I would like to recognize the efforts of Laura Hoffmaster, Doug Smith, in our legal department, for their countless hours in revisions in responses to comments throughout this whole process. I've only been dealing with it for the last two years, Laura has been six-plus, so I'd just like to recognize they're, they were the boots on the ground doing the work.
And I recognize their efforts also, as well as the public comment input and how it was handled, and I think it's always going to be a working document, so, you know, we will, we will go through everything as we need to and make the changes if we need to, and I commend legal department, Jeff and Anthony, for their efforts on it, too.
I just wanted to thank the staff for all the work they put into it, everyone involved in it. I thought the meetings and all were handled really well, and everybody had a chance to voice their concerns if they chose to, and you guys did a great job in handling that, and we appreciate it greatly.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Just like the roundtable discussions that the staff managed and handled, you know, you have, you have different agencies or corporations trying to make their points known and understood by all, so that it works for, tries to make it work for everybody, you know, and especially the public, but it's, I appreciate your efforts because I know that you sit back and you listen, and you went back and you tried to find a way to address a lot of those issues. Sometimes you couldn't do it, but it wasn't because you didn't try. It was. It was just some things that you couldn't do. But, but to have it open for discussion and good discussion is really important to be able to get a good document. So I appreciate your efforts and the work that was involved.
When does this document go into effect? When does the document go into effect?
We'll do that. We're going to close this public hearing here pretty soon and then we'll make it an announcement and hand it right back to them and it'll go into effect. I'm sure there's going to be projects that are going to be in the between stages from this document, all of the documents that, you know, we'll, we'll work through, but I know we have a, anything new will be presented on the new document. That's my intent, so. Thirty days. Thirty days. All right. Like that?
Yep.
Okay. All righty, any other public comment? Motion to close public hearing?
I move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, hearing's closed. Very good. All righty. Little bit ahead of time.
Take the motion to.
Okay. So.
Talk about that.
Yeah, come on up, Brian.
As, as for the adoption date, we request the commission to give us at least 30 days. A lot of that has to do with the input of, in our software system of updating documents, fees and everything to make sure that come day one, we're ready to go.
Okay.
So.
So if we make the adoption date July 31st?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Now, do you file this thing with Tony Patrici? Sure you do that because previously, years ago, it wasn't done and it's tremendous confusion. And whatever document that is, you stamp it, this is the document because there was some confusion about which was the original document and which were additions.
And then.
So this is, you know, please make this very clear so we don't have a repeat of 1990 something. Thank you.
So you want us to go and make that motion? So, okay, Jeff. Need a motion to adopt the new ordinance effective July 30, July 31st, 2024? Or August 1st?
Yeah, August 1st.
We'll do it for August 1st, 2024. Need a motion to adopt the new ordinance?
I move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Two seconds. We'll have two of them.
Third.
Third. Fourth, fifth. All righty. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. First it is. That was a sigh of relief, Jeff, was that what that was? Okay. Sure. Thank you all. Closure, opener, whatever. We're going a little bit early. Hoy, since you're here, would you like to come on up and?
Bear your soul.
Bear, yeah, bear your soul to us and would, tell us a little bit of something that we may not know or would you like us to know? And then we'll ask you some questions.
Well, I've lived in Berkeley County since 1987. I was on the Development Authority, I think for two terms. And I, I think maybe been six or eight years ago when I was last on maybe. I have a real interest in economic development. I am presently representing and have for about 20 years, the Hampshire County Development Authority. Of course, that's my home county. And I have in the past, but am not now, representing the Jefferson County Development Authority. So been involved in a lot of different projects and I'm interested in seeing quality growth in Berkeley County and getting good companies to come here that give us good jobs with benefits and so forth. I, I think the critical thing is we, we want to help the citizens of Berkeley County have a better quality of life. I think that's, of course, we, you know, we want all the other things that go along with it, but at the end of the day, that's what the Development Authority's job is.
Well, we'll start off HD, have any questions for Hoy as far as?
I don't really, I mean, it seems like you, you're well versed in this sort of thing and I like your comment about making a better quality of life, so I'll just commend you on a plan for the position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnhart?
Well, of course, I'm familiar with Hoy because he represents the Berkeley County Public Service Water District and he actually, with that, he represents several other public service districts. So he's very familiar with that aspect and he's right, he, he has always been concerned with the development of Berkeley County as a, as a good site for industry. And I assume you would continue in that.
Yes, I, you know, I'm still practicing law. I, I could have retired a long time ago. I'm not exactly sure what I would do if I retired. I'm not going to move to Florida.
Or, or back to Hampshire County?
Well, I, I could do that. I, I've told several friends, when I get up in the morning, I've got to see a ridgeline someplace in one direction. It's just a way.
Well, you got a good view of North Mountain.
I got a good view of North Mountain from my house on Ridge Road. That is true.
I'm like you, Hoy, I don't think I'll move to Florida, but I do like to visit there in the cold weather.
Yeah, occasionally when it's cold, yeah, sure.
Pete, have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I don't think there's anybody more qualified in this county than Hoy Shingleton who served on this board. He served before very well and I, I, I think it's important in my mind that somebody that understands the water district and the responsibilities they have serve on that board. So I think it's, we need to get him back on there, it's a perfect fit and I just appreciate the fact that Hoy was willing to serve again on it and thank you so much.
Eddie?
Yeah, well, I've worked with Hoy on a couple of different projects and it's always been a pleasure. Not only is he very intelligent, but he's, he's very polite and very courteous and very professional. He has an extensive background in Development Authority as he, as he just mentioned, as well as having served on this board previously. So like, I think he's an excellent candidate.
I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments. We've grown to know each other, I guess, over the last 20 some years and I respect all the information and the, and the education you've given me in, in our dealings together and different organizations. And again, I will mimic to what they said, I, I can't think of anybody else that would serve this board any better. So I really appreciate all, all you do for our county and all you do for everybody. So I want to thank you so much for taking your time to come in and saying hi, so.
Thank you.
All righty, well, thank you so much, Hoy.
And Mr. President, I know this is a little bit out of character for us, but I, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we appoint Hoy Shingleton to the Berkeley County Development Authority.
And I'd like to second it.
I'd like to third it.
So you're on the board.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I need to see.
Yes, you will. We'll get a letter from Penny and.
I can stop here at our office over here. He'll give you a letter, take care.
All right, thank you, Hoy.
Thank you, Hoy.
All righty, well, we're going to take a little break here and then about that for, for a few minutes. We'll be right back. Thank you.
We're back in session and next up is Tim's Eye of Community Corrections. Come on up, Tim.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you.
Good morning, as well.
Intentionally.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be brief.
We're a little bit early.
Sorry.
I believe you have in your read ahead a copy of the document that I'm looking at. I'm here to, in case you haven't noticed, big old building being built over there in our parking lot.
Really? What's up over there?
Yeah, what's going on?
It's colorful. It's colorful.
You kind of well hit there.
I need to fill that thing up and we need the help desperately. So this is one of a couple of grants that we're gonna be pursuing and I'm here to request your blessing for us to pursue it. This is a fiscal year 24 COSOP grant, Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Use Program. It's a BJA grant, which is Bureau of Justice Assistance, a federal grant. It is for $1,300,000, three-year grant, zero match required. If we were to be awarded the grant, we would be able to add additional staff, one expert specialist, which is a case manager-like position, a recovery coach, two case managers, and a therapist. It will also include some equipment, some computer equipment, some monies for computer equipment, about $3,000, travel to the Bureau of Justice Assistance Conference. And they like to see community partners involved in these sorts of grants. So we would include Project Aware, which is a program through East Ridge, which provides counseling to younger kids that need those sorts of services in the schools, and the Boys and Girls Club.
Are these a new grant or one?
New grant.
You haven't used this particular grant in the past.
No, sir. This is a new one we're applying for.
So these positions are new positions?
They would be new positions, yes.
And for a total of three years, you say?
Yes.
I don't know. There's no money to match. I don't know about this one.
Right. I told you it'd be easy and quick.
Tim, I can't see any reason why we wouldn't. I mean, you know, your proof is in the pudding with you and your crew over there and I can't see not doing this.
Well, how's the addition coming?
Very well.
The electrical thing is still on hold.
Nope. It's fixed and done. We're good.
Really? Really?
Good to go. I was a little worried there for a minute, but I think we're on track.
Completion in August. Really? Awesome. That's awesome. You guys are excited as the transit authority was yesterday, I would think.
Say completion this August?
This August.
Yeah. Couple of months.
Couple of months.
All righty, I need a motion to approve the COSOP grant, COSAP, to, for substance use program grant.
I would move to accept that grant possibility. I make a motion to do so.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
People always ask me, this building, all these programs gotta be costing us a fortune. And I say, well, actually.
Two fortunes.
Yeah. Well, with the federal government contributing, all they contribute.
Yeah, I regret I made that comment. It's not. It's saving. It's saving our community. It's not costing us, you know.
It would be far more expensive for you all to not have these programs.
I take back what I said.
That's what I tell them. I said, actually, it's saving us money. It's not costing us money.
Yeah. I can't imagine what our jail cost alone would be without, you know, the efforts of this entity, you know.
The cost, the cost of your debt service, as well as the cost of 100% operating expenses, would be consumed by regional jail costs if you didn't do what he does.
Yeah.
And, and remember, you're keeping families together and people at home.
That was the point I was gonna make. The finances are obviously important, but arguably more importantly is the fact that these programs are providing people an opportunity outside of the jail to find and maintain recovery, to be connected with their families, to work, to pay their bills, to contribute to the community in general. Those positive ripple effects are hard to measure.
And to describe that to somebody that never has had to deal with an addiction or any member of their family with an addiction, sometimes it's hard for them to understand, you know, what we're doing.
Yeah. But they see this major addition come on to this beautiful building and like, what's going on? And I, you know, I tell them, I'd said, the only thing I wish is the day when we don't need it and we have to come up with another use for it, other than what we're using it for now.
That'd be a great day.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna happen in our life.
No, I don't either, but I still have that wish.
Do the numbers seem to be coming down some or you just don't know because of all the home kits and all that kind of stuff?
Overdose numbers, you mean? Overdose numbers have come down, but I believe it's a result of so much Narcan being available in the community.
You think they're still around the same amount of usage?
Yes.
If not more?
And with the population, right?
Or different.
But with the population that we experience, it's gonna continue.
Okay. Well, all those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. Now we have Nancy here with us this morning.
A little early, but.
A little early, but that's not a problem.
That's not your fault, Nancy. That's ours.
Always good to see you. Welcome.
Good morning. Yeah, the reason I'm here today is because we're renewing for the next three years. I go out every three years to renew the big home consortium for the Eastern Panhandle and I go to all the little towns and all the cities. Started up at Paw Paw back in M.A., made it to Bath, then Hedgesville, had a great, great, great meeting, a visit with Hedgesville. And then I've been.
Such a wonderful little town.
I know. It really is.
A very fond memory.
We're living in the 60s, but Paw Paw's still in the 1940s and 50s.
Well, they've had to make some changes and I was very impressed with them. They've got some, they've got some things going on in Paw Paw and they've got a really good mayor and council.
Just takes a year and a day to get there.
Well, exactly. I tried to go different ways, but.
But you can't get there from here.
No. Well, you have to go into Hampshire County to get there.
The people from DC are coming up, let me tell you, because the prices of houses are still affordable.
Every time I hear Paw Paw, I think of my grandmother because she always called Paw Paws the mountain bananas.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, the fruit that was on the tree that she caught.
But, yeah, they're starting to get the city people coming up and they, the mayor was telling me that one wanted to change the name of their street to Main Street and she was like, you know. So there's been a lot of.
Lot of changes.
Lot of change because it used to be the development, they were coming up to Great Cape and, but now they're going all the way up. So, there's the prices. So, anyway, so now I'm over in Jefferson County, was in Charlestown last week, Ransin, Shepherdstown the week before, and I go to Bolivar Tuesday and then Harpers Ferry. I already did Harpers Ferry, so I've gotta go through all the, all the towns to renew this for the next three years for the funding. And the reason we do this is so we can get the home grant program to come into the city. So, so then, of course, you know, I have to come back to you all so you can do it too.
Is this a public hearing?
No.
Just need a motion to adopt, adopt the home consortium resolution.
Who's our representative? Go ahead and motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the.
Adopt the resolution?
Adopt the resolution.
There you go.
I'll second it.
And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Okay. And then we've gotta do the cooperative agreement. This is the resolution and then there's a cooperative agreement.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt, or to, yeah, to approve the cooperative housing consortium cooperation agreement.
I'll so move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Okay. And then we've gotta do the cooperative agreement. This is the resolution and then there's a cooperative agreement.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt, or to, yeah, to approve the cooperative housing consortium cooperation agreement.
I'll so move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Okay. And then we've gotta do the cooperative agreement. This is the resolution and then there's a cooperative agreement.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt, or to, yeah, to approve the cooperative housing consortium cooperation agreement.
I'll so move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
And I did just wanna give you an update. We just had a closing last month on a house and for the first-time home buyers program and a near Pike Side Summer Hill development. And I'm working with a lady on the new construction in Enwood to settle in July. So even though the, you know, mortgages are still a little high, people are still getting a lot more interest. I guess they're just tired of waiting, so we're getting a lot more.
Summer Hill, I can set my kitchen nook and I could see Summer Hill.
Oh, okay. Well, there's a nice young couple in there.
Well, very good.
That we assisted, so with our, our first-time home buyers.
But just don't let them. I live near them. Don't let them know because they'll probably wanna move, so.
Well, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All righty. Next up is our own legal director, Anthony DeLaGuetti, Fire Fee Ordinance Update.
As all of you were aware, the.
We're back in session and next up is Tim Zio of Community Corrections. Come on up, Tim. Good to see you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you.
Good morning as well.
Intentional.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be brief.
We're a little bit early.
Sorry.
I believe you have in your read ahead a copy of the document that I'm looking at. I'm here to, in case you haven't noticed, the old building being built over there in our parking lot.
Really? What's up over there?
Yeah, what's going on? What did that start?
It's colorful.
You got a well hit there.
I need to fill that thing up and we need the help desperately. So this is one of a couple of grants that we're gonna be pursuing and I'm here to request your blessing for us to pursue it. This is a fiscal year 24 COSUP grant, Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Use Program. It's a BJA grant, which is Bureau of Justice Assistance, a federal grant. It is for $1,300,000, three-year grant, zero match required. If we were to be awarded the grant, we would be able to add additional staff, one expert specialist, which is a case manager-like position, peer recoveries coach, two case managers, and a therapist. It will also include some equipment, some computer equipment, some monies for computer equipment, about $3,000, travel to the Bureau of Justice Assistance Conference, and they like to see community partners involved in these sorts of grants. So we would include Project Aware, which is a program through East Ridge, which provides counseling to younger kids that need those sorts of services in the schools, and the Boys and Girls Club.
Are these a new grant or?
New grant.
So if you haven't used this particular grant in the past?
No, sir. This is a new one we're applying for.
So these positions are new positions?
They would be new positions, yes.
And for a total of three years, you say?
Yes.
I don't know. There's no money to match you. I don't know about this one.
Right? I told you it'd be easy and quick.
Uh, Tim, I can't see any reason why we wouldn't. I mean, you know, your proof is in the pudding with you and your crew over there and I can't see not doing this.
Well, how's the addition coming?
Very well.
The electrical thing is still on hold?
Nope.
It's fixed and done.
We're good.
Good to go.
All right.
I was a little worried there for a minute, but I think we're on track.
Completion in August.
Really? Awesome. That's awesome. You guys are excited as the transit authority was yesterday, I would think.
Say completion this August?
This August.
Yeah. Couple of months.
Couple of months.
Alrighty, I need a motion to approve the COSUP, COSUP?
Grant.
COSUP, to, for Substance Use Program Grant.
I would move to accept that grant possibility. I make a motion to do so.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
People always ask me, this building, all these programs gotta be costing us a fortune. And I say, well, actually.
Two fortunes.
Yeah. Well, with the federal government contributing, all they contribute.
Yeah, I regret I made that comment. It's not. It's saving. It's saving our community. It's not costing us, you know.
It would be far more expensive for you all to not have these programs.
I take back what I said.
That's what I tell them. I said, actually, it's saving us money. It's not costing us money.
Yeah.
I can't imagine what our jail cost alone would be without, you know, the efforts of this entity, you know, making it possible.
The cost of your debt service, as well as the cost of 100% operating expenses, would be consumed by regional jail costs.
Yeah.
If you didn't do what he does.
Yeah.
And, and remember, you're keeping families together and people at home.
That was the point I was gonna make. The finances are obviously important, but arguably more importantly is the fact that these programs are providing people an opportunity outside of the jail.
So being productive.
Find and maintain recovery, to be connected with their families, to work, to pay their bills, to contribute to the community in general. Those positive ripple effects are hard to measure.
It, and to describe that to somebody that never has had to deal with an addiction or any member of their family with an addiction, it's sometimes it's hard for them to understand, you know, what we're doing.
But they see this major addition come on to this beautiful building and like, what's going on? And I, you know, I tell them, I'd said, the only thing I wish is the day when we don't need it and we have to come up with another use for it, other than what we're using it for now.
Be a great day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna happen in our lifetime.
No, I don't either, but I still have that wish.
Do the numbers seem to be coming down some or you just don't know because of all the home kits and all that kind of stuff?
Overdose numbers, you mean? Overdose numbers have come down, but I believe it's a result of so much Narcan being available in the community.
You think they're still around the same amount of usage?
Yes.
If not more or?
And with the population.
It's hard to say.
Or different.
But with the population growth we experience, it's gonna continue.
Okay. Well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. Now we have Nancy here with us this morning.
A little early, but.
A little early, but that's not a problem.
That's not your fault, Nancy. That's ours.
Always good to see you. Welcome.
Good morning. Yeah, the reason I'm here today is because we're renewing for the next three years. I go out every three years to renew the big home consortium for the Eastern Panhandle and I go to all the little towns and all the cities. Started up at Paw Paw back in May, made it to Bath, then Hedgesville, had a great, great, great meeting, a visit with Hedgesville, and then I've been.
Such a wonderful little town.
I know. It really is.
A very fond memory.
We're living in the 60s, but Paw Paw's still in the 1940s and 50s.
Well, they've had to make some changes and I was very impressed with them. They've got some, the whole, they've got some things going on in Paw Paw and they've got a really good mayor and council.
Just takes a year and a day to get there.
Well, exactly. I tried to go different ways, but.
But you can't get there from here.
No.
Yeah.
Well, you have to go into Hampshire County to get there.
The people from DC are coming up, let me tell you, 'cause the prices of houses are still affordable.
Every time I hear Paw Paw, I think of my grandmother because she always called Paw Paws the mountain bananas.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, the fruit that was on the tree that she bought.
But, yeah, they're starting to get the city people coming up and they, the mayor was telling me that one wanted to change the name of their street to Main Street and they, she was like, you know, so there's been a lot of.
Lot of changes.
Lot of change, 'cause it used to be the development, they were coming up to Great Cape, but now they're going all the way up, so, because of prices. So anyway, so now I'm over in Jefferson County, was in Charlestown last week, Ransin, Shepherdstown the week before, and I go to Bolivar Tuesday and then Harpers Ferry. I already did Harpers Ferry, so gotta go through all the, all the towns to renew this for the next three years for the funding. And the reason we do this is so we can get the home grant program to come into the city. So, so then, of course, you know, I have to come back to you all so you can do it too.
Is this a public hearing?
No.
No, just need a motion to adopt, adopt the home consortium resolution.
Who's our representative? Go ahead and motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the.
Adopt the resolution?
Adopt the resolution.
There you go.
I'll second it.
And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and then we've gotta do the cooperative agreement. This is the resolution and then there's a cooperative agreement as well.
Okay, need a motion to adopt or to, yeah, to approve the cooperative housing consortium cooperation agreement.
I'll so moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
And I did just wanna give you an update. We just had a closing last month on a house and for the first-time home buyers program in a near Pike Side, Summer Hill development. And I'm working with a lady on the new construction in Edwood and to settle in July. So even though the, you know, mortgages are still a little high, people are still getting a lot more interest. I guess they're just tired of waiting, so we're getting a lot more.
Summer Hill, I can set my kitchen nook and I could see Summer Hill.
Oh, okay. Well, there's a nice young couple in there.
Well, very good.
And that way assisted, so, with our, our first-time home buyers.
But just don't let them, I live near them, don't let them know, 'cause they'll probably wanna move, so.
Well, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Alrighty, uh, next up is our own legal director, Anthony DeLaGuetti. Fire fee ordinance update.
So as all of you were aware, the primary election included on it an amendment to the fire fee, which was approved by, by the voters. So this ordinance change, the only substantive change is electing what the voters approved and amending the non-residential fire fee. It also cleaned up some of the language in there and there was an incorrect cite to some statute, but other than that, the only substantive change is the actual fire fee. It's already been approved by the voters. There's not really much discretion you have at this point to go ahead.
It goes into effect July 1?
It goes into effect July 1st, yes.
Alrighty, need a motion to approve the fire fee ordinance update.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. How about that? All right, Mr. Wine. Declaration of, declaration of surplus property.
Say that again?
No, I'm not. That was hardened up the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you've done before, and as you well know with the, the construction and redesign of this building, we have several items that are in storage at Baltimore Street. We've, we've done our best to, to recycle, if you will, the stuff that wasn't worth getting to the point where it may have some value. So you have in front of you two vehicles and a whole bunch of desks and chairs and cabinets. I assure you, this isn't stuff that we need to store for use for later in, in your buildings. We, we've already picked that and had that set aside, so we're asking for you to declare this surplus. And then the second ask is, because I've had a lot of interest, if the commission so chooses, maybe offer to your outside agencies opportunity to view it for an in-kind gift to them as opposed to auctioning it. So if you choose to, we'll offer it up to all the outside agencies and if they don't have any interest, then we'll put it out to the public.
Well, that sounds like a fair and equitable use.
Seems that way.
Where'd all this stuff come from? Just?
Every office that moved here. So from the assessor to the tax office, you've, you've done everything new in, in part of the budget process for this building, Mr. Barnhart, was to, to get everybody up to current standards with desks and chairs and things. So this is all left over and, and I promise you, again, not something that's worth us holding on to, to reuse somewhere else.
Well, it looks like it'd take a very substantial place to put all this stuff.
Thank goodness for Baltimore Street.
Yeah.
That is a gift that keeps on giving.
Um, we can just do a consensus of offering it to the other agencies.
And then we.
And then we'll make a motion to whatever's left.
Yeah, if you, if you can declare it surplus, that'll get it off your books. And then if you could in fact give the consensus that you want me to offer to the outside agencies and, again, we'll, once it's surplus, we'll, we'll ultimately, whatever's left over, put it on the auction site and let the public bid on it.
That sounds good. Can I have a motion to have the declaration of surplus of property to make it happen by, per the county administrator's request?
So moved.
Okay.
All the way around the room here. We're good to go. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Alrighty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And we have an Opekkin stream blockage discussion.
Yes, sir. So.
Well, let me say something about the surplus. I think it's a great idea to offer to the other agencies if they need something there. That's wonderful. So I appreciate you recommending that.
So you're gonna flash email everybody?
We will. We will. I kinda left out the fact that when you see Tracy McCormick, you tell her good job because she has worked her kazoo off to get that stuff designed, pictures taken, and labeled and numbered. It's a, several, several days in not-so-wonderful environment of Baltimore Street getting it ready, so, yeah, it'll be a good thing.
You're gonna have a.
You see is not so great.
It's lacking.
You're gonna have a day that you invite them all in to look at it or?
We'll, we'll open it up, leave it a couple of weeks, just give them a couple of weeks to come look at it and take it and then watch it.
Let me interrupt, but I appreciate you.
Sure.
Lot of problems.
So as you're all aware, and we've discussed on multiple occasions, an issue with the Opekkin out, what would be east of the Route 9 Bridge, as you come down there, I burned it down, about 5,300 feet upstream from there is a, is a blockage. Has everybody seen it? Digest it? Here's three printed. Take a look at those in order. That's 2020 to present, so that's what it looked like in 2020. And then if you turn the page, that's what it looked like in 2022, about 272 feet long. And then it slid a little bit, and if you look at the erosion to the south, to the north, in 2023, it's about 250 feet long. So Matt, who is in the back of the room, has, if you remember, we kinda tasked him to reach out to contacts to see if we couldn't get some, just some noise made about the problem we have in the stream. So Matt did his magic, which he's an expert at. I believe he started with Senator Manchin, which in turn got a conversation going on between the West Virginia Conservation Agency and, and a gentleman by the name of Stephen Starcher. Come on up, Matt. And in, in those conversations, they've been on site, they've, they've kinda assessed the situation. And if you don't know, there's a, there's, there's a process where they call it the emergency watershed protection process. And if this mass fell underneath of that effort, there's a pool of money for them to come in, swoop in and take care of it. Well, guess what? It doesn't fall under. Because, Matt, they said, because there's no, there's no doom on the, where the water flows that it would involve, correct?
That's correct. They, it does not qualify because of the imminent threat of danger.
Is this acting like a dam?
Oh, yeah.
It's essentially a dam of logs, trees, debris.
250 feet long.
Well, once they, let's say it's cleared, what's to prevent it from happening again?
Well, nothing, but it'll take a long time for it to happen like this.
Well, yeah, but.
Right. We gotta get it out of the river, the creek.
So.
Yeah, it's only gonna get worse.
So in these conversations, in an effort to try and see what the options were, the, the West Virginia Conservation Agency handed us what they call their 7-1-3-U agreement. Anthony's looked at it. It really doesn't commit you to anything, but it's the tool and mechanism to create the relationship with the state to start the process of finding what the costs are. They do all the engineering services, stuff like it. They have that expertise. I first had this on the agenda for discussion. Penny called me the other day and said, hey, you've got this on the discussion, now you're asking for something to be signed. That's because that man right there, I did it, has facilitated even more motion, and they've reached back and said there's opportunity for some immediate funding to maybe in turn resolve the issue at hand. So what we're asking for, if the commission so chooses, is to exercise the agreement with the West Virginia Conservation Agency and see what the next step brings. They laid initial estimates of about $50,000 for cleaning.
Very preliminary number.
Very preliminary. They did say that they felt the best opportunity would be extract and burn on-site. There's landowners there that are willing, and that's part of the agreement. We'll have to work with the landowners and get some consensual agreements for this to happen. Hauling it out, they're like, if we haul that out, we will ruin the ingress road. We can't do it.
Plus the expense of it.
Plus the expense. So really what this does is this creates a relationship with the state to allow everything to start to happen. So we're not asking for money, we're not asking for any financial commitment other than the execution of this so we can see where it goes. But again, Matt's efforts, there may be opportunity where it can happen and at zero cost requests from the county.
Is this upstream from Route 9?
Yep.
Yeah.
Just to add just a little, I was advised.
Is the property owner? Is there, there's a different property owner on each side?
There is.
There is.
Who are they here?
I can tell you.
That's part of actually, that's actually part of what.
I've been asked that and.
Right, that's part of actually what the, the state would like, would like us to do.
Right.
Not.
To make the initial contact.
To identify the landowners and to try to connect with them in a positive way and say, look, you know, are you on board with us with this concept of coming in here and mitigating this situation? And they want us.
Another way to do it.
And they obviously want it resolved, obviously.
Right. It was expressed to me that the governor's office has got involved with this in a positive way to help essentially identify funds.
I talked to Berkeley Bentley the other day and about another issue, and he brought it up in our conversation that, hey, we're working on this.
Right.
Thing with the Opekkin Creek.
Right.
And I said, that's great, 'cause we need help.
It is.
And we shouldn't have to pay for it, just what they're doing.
Right. It is a designated water trail, which means, basically means it's a recreational infrastructure in our community. The state has given it that designation and as of right now, it's not a passable area through the stream there. So it is in the state interest, for cer, for certain, absolutely.
The one on the south side is, the last name is Billman, George Billman?
B-I-L-L.
M-A-N, yes, sir. And the other two pieces on the other side of the water, Daniel Kimble and Sammy Roberts.
They, they really, and talking with some of the next steps and if you all are agreeable to moving forward, would be to have an onsite meeting with the landowners and kind of reviewing, saying, hey, this is what this would look like as far as mitigation and making sure that everyone is on board and agreeable and.
And they have the space to, to all this debris to be placed on their property to burn, you know, so they got plenty of acreage there to.
Right. There, there would obviously have to be some permissions granted by local.
Sure.
Property owners. And it's, you know, it's not the prettiest process on the mitigation, I'll just say, but they, WVCA, the West Virginia Conservation Agency, has done this. Other locations in West Virginia seem like they know what they're doing and there's a process involved and there's a contract and there's, you know, a bid award and.
With, with anything like this when on somebody else's property, you do have a liability to clean it back up.
Matt, did he not say it's one of the largest he'd seen?
Yes, it's considered to be.
A big one.
A very large situation for even them. Usually this, these occur in emergency situations where there's a flooding, you know, or something, but.
There's already been an erosion of serious.
I would, I would think maybe a flood causes to start, I would guess.
Yeah.
These trees would come out of nowhere on that low water. You can see that one little tree in the first picture, HD.
Right.
That's what he thought probably started it, was a tree falling and then it just went from there.
I, I think there probably may have been some, this is a stretch maybe, but the ash borer, you know, has destroyed the ash tree population in our country. And so there could be.
I was just wondering, Matt, there wasn't any logging that occurred in that area.
I don't, I asked about that. I don't think anyone found any evidence of any kind of intentional, just, you know, felling of any trees. I, I don't think anyone has found any acts of vandalism that would have allowed for this. There was a reference, there was maybe a possibility that the, because the, there was a mill race maybe upstream from this area, that it might have lowered the water in this area and kinda led to these conditions occurring in that location back. A mill race is, I guess, an old mill-related strategy to divert water out of the creek, but I, I don't know whether there's any evidence really historical about those conditions being created and leading to this shallow area where these trees all backed up. But as you saw from the aerials, the 2020 images show no problems, so I, I don't know.
There's been multiple problems there at Van Meter Bridge.
Right.
With collection of logs and.
Yes.
Still is.
That it, there still actually is. It's not nearly like this, but I, I see those, yes, absolutely, Commissioner. I'm not sure what's causing those there, to be honest.
The Department of Highways can get to this bridge area and clean them easily because they don't have to worry about the private right of ways.
Right.
It happens all the time back at Curzy's Bridge, back there and in different places. I mean, you know, every other year, you gotta go clean it.
The WVCA, though, yesterday, I think it was, was very positive and expressing about funding and, you know, but they also asked, the arsenal on our side, they also indicated that actually the county has a great deal of authority in regards to matters like this, more than their, that agency apparently. And, and that, and request for the legwork of engaging with the property owners is something they would still hope we would be on board with.
And that's part of the agreement. There'll be some work for your legal team for contracts and stuff like that. So this isn't a free walk for the county commission if you choose to do, but the bigger numbers on the other side, which we believe hopefully there'll be some help with.
The DOH has the equipment to do it, so you don't have to rent additional equipment to do this. The DOH has that.
Well, the WVCA would, they, they work with the Eastern Panhandle Conservation District, not to get too much in the weeds, but they work with the Conservation District here through writing of the contract and awarding it. There's a process they follow.
Gotta break a few eggs and make an omelet.
Yeah.
Alrighty, we need a motion to, to go ahead with the, with proper term, the paperwork or the contract.
No, it's an agreement.
The agreement.
Yes, sir. To approve the president's signature.
Yep, to approve the agreement for the Conservation District.
Conservation, the West Virginia Conservation Agency for blockage removal work.
For that.
Yeah.
And give me the ability to sign it.
Please.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Let the water flow. Thank you, Matt. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Matt.
Alrighty.
Yeah, thank you, Matt.
Do we have a executive session?
No, sir.
No, sir? Any items from the public? None here?